I'd like to call a Gordon Trustee's regular meeting Monday, December 2nd, 2019 at 6:30 to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions?
I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented. Second.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Holland. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Number four, approval of minutes 11-4, 2019.
I make a motion to be approved, the minutes as written from 11-4, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Gurley. Once again, any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Number five, public announcements. Any public announcements at this time?
This isn't really a public announcement, but I just wanted to thank everybody that came to the community dinner and helped with the community dinner. We served 384 people, no, sorry, 387 people and raised lots of food and some money for the pantry.
Okay, thank you. Other public announcements? Number six, public comment. Any public comment at this time? No public comment. Number seven, consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the Township Board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established Township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the Board or public so requests at or prior to the meeting, in which event the Chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item #8 below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by a majority roll combo of those present and voting.
We have bills and invoices this month totaling $409,914.86.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the Treasurer's report at invoices of $409,914.86.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Public questions? Clerk Rockup, please.
Clifford?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Number eight, there are no items that have been removed from the consent agenda. Number nine, unfinished business. Letter A, community room window covering proposal. Trustee Clifford?
Unfortunately, that particular A is going to have to be tabled again. I had two bidders back out, and I have one. I can't bring it back to you guys with one. So there's one in the process and another one coming out on Thursday to measure.
Thank you, sir. Motion to table, is there support?
Yep, support.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Letter B, Township Reader Board Signed Proposal.
I have two quotes in. We were going to vote on that tonight, but unfortunately, both quotes were out of the budget. They were way over what we planned, so we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and either combine next year's and this year's, or we're going to have to find a real Jeep company. So anyway, at this time, we're good. I'd like to table that and maybe we table that one because it's outside of the realm of the budget money we allotted for it.
I'll second that also.
Once again, motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Thank you. Number 10, new business. Letter A, Fire Department Motom Purchase Request. Mr. Wright?
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the Board. The item A is just really an item of information for the Board. The Fire Department had budgeted this year to replace the modems that are in three of their rescue vehicles. These are the modems that allow the onboard computers in the vehicles to connect to the Internet, which can connect to their medical reporting software, their fire reporting software, and eventually would like to be able to connect them to dispatch as well. The cost for these was $2,343.87. They have been purchased in as much as the money was in the budget to purchase those, so they would have more as a bonus.
So what's that?
The other item, I'm sorry. So that's it on item A. Would you like to recover item B as well?
Look, we'll do one at a time, please, sir. So letter A. Your request for a modem purchase.
I'll make a motion that we approve the modem replacement in the three rescue vehicles as requested and as budgeted. Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Once again, any questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk Rockup, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Letter B, sir, Fire Department Permit, Plan Review Fee Schedule.
So as most of the Boards are aware, over the past month, we have met with all involved Department Heads, a number of Township officials, and retained the services of a company called Fire Savvy Incorporated to do our fire plan reviews and inspections, and as needed, private inspections for businesses who need them, as well as permitting. With that, a new commercial fee schedule for this fire plan review and other services needed to be developed. Fire Savvy met with Amy Flood in our Building Department and developed this new fee schedule based on their charges. That fee schedule was sent to you by email, and I believe all the Board has had an opportunity to look at that. Simply, we're requesting tonight that the Township Board consider approving the new fee schedule as developed by Fire Savvy and our Building Department.
Any questions for Mr. Wright?
Jeff, how many of these went up? I mean, do you have any sentences that went up since last time? I didn't compare.
So, you know, I did not do a side-by-side comparison. It was made clear to us by Fire Savvy that the fees would be, in fact, higher for this private.
Based on what this company's charges were?
Yes. This company's fees were found to be less than the other companies that do this kind of work. Currently, with the retirement of Chief Boucher, we do not have anybody at the Fire Department qualified to do this kind of work, and so really, our option is to, you know, hire an employee who would just be, you know, potentially an employee who would have to pay a salary and benefits to, or in fact, hire a company who has the qualifications to do this kind of work. So really, I don't, I feel like there's limited options, you know, for us to look elsewhere or do something else with regards to fire plan review.
Any other questions?
I will make a motion to approve the use of Fire Savvy and the new Lennox Township Commercial Fee Schedule as presented this evening.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Letter C, DPW Tire Purchase Request.
Good evening. Good evening. I know we had this same item on the agenda last month. Unfortunately, this is for another vehicle. Previous month, with some of the roadside work we were doing, we experienced some damage to the tires on the pickup, and given the current state and wear of those tires, I'm recommending that we replace those tires at this time. Some of the damage that occurred really is not safe to repair, nor will any tire shop repair them. I did collect three different quotes from three local distributors as follows. I'm recommending we purchase the Coopers from Vance Tire in Richmond for $900. As a balance, out the door.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to purchase tires for the DPW truck from Vance Tire for $900.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Clerk Candell. Once again, any discussion? Deputy Clerk Rockup, please.
Arnold?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Letter D, 2020 Assessment Change Notice Preparation and Mailing Request.
These requests came from Christine in the Assessing Office, and as we have done in the past, she is requesting that we, she has bitted out and is requesting that the assessment change notices be printed and posted by KCI Communications at the cost of $1,924.14. It's $565.64 to do the actual notices and an estimated postage of $1,358.50.
Okay. Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the mailing of the 2020 Assessment Change Notices through KCI Communications at the cost of $565.64 plus an estimate of postage costs of $1,358.50 for a total cost of $1,924.14 as recommended by Assessor Lisa Grin.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Once again, any discussion or questions? Deputy Clerk Rockup, please.
Clifford?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Letter E, 2020 Personal Property Statement Preparation and Mailing Request.
Again, this is coming from the Assessor's office, and they are recommending Whitlock Business Systems for the printing and mailing of the 2020 Personal Property Record Statements at the cost of $161.76 for printing and $66 of estimated postage for a total of $227.76. I will make a motion that we award the bid of $227.76 to Whitlock Business Systems for the 2020 Personal Property Statement Preparation and Mailing. Second.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Gurley. Once again, any discussion or questions? Deputy Clerk Rockup, once again, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Letter F, Employee Healthcare Coverage Renewal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is our Zocross Blue Shield Renewal. Renewal for 2020 is increasing by 7.08.
And as you see, last year, we had a negative 0.95% for the renewal.
Correct.
Our age factor is a 4% increase. Prior to that, I believe our averages were roughly 13% on average every year, so we were able to curb that and change our program. Had a negative renewal amount, and now average at 7.08.
Yeah, but still lower than other communities, which is good to hear.
You said it went down last year? Negative, negative number, 0.95, almost 1.4% negative. Now it's gone up 7. Before then, prior to that, I believe it was around 13% we were usually bidding every year.
13% in three years?
Correct.
How often do we bid out? Do we ever bid out insurance to other companies?
We have. The last time, I believe. The problem we usually have is, we'll get somebody that'll come out, and then we don't hear from them or see them, and try to get questions or answers. And when the Obamacare switched over, we couldn't find anybody that had a straight answer, even after we spent, what, two days down at the county trying to figure out 400 and some different healthcare programs, I believe it was, and they didn't know. So I think maybe they're starting to learn these programs now a little better. The last gentleman we had was very knowledgeable. He's been available to answer questions. Prior to that, we had great difficulty.
If there's been any issues with any employee, no one's come and brought it to my attention, so.
I think because we're so small, it's not like a big account, but...
We really don't have a chance to bid it for this year. We have to almost accept this this year and bid it next year if we chose to do it.
That's what we choose to do.
We have to give our employees 45 days' notice of a change, so if we were to bid this out again, we would have to start in July, August, and working on that.
I said more like January.
I mean, you can start to process it if you want. I think what she's saying is July is the latest time you can start if you want to bid it again. That being said, I make a motion to approve the renewal of the employee healthcare coverage as it is.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk Rockup, please.
Clifford?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Letter G, Reconsideration of Healthcare Policy for New Hires.
In 2013, January of 2013...
Can you move the microphone closer for me?
In January of 2013, it was approved that if employee lost their family or healthcare, they would pay the premiums 100% for the family members.
Well, we're looking at, we have an employee that has requested two children to be put on their insurance, and back in 2013, it was revoked that only the hire would be, it would get insurance at an 80-20 cost.
Correct.
It was stopped at that point, so anybody that we have that we hire at this point, whether they get married and have a child, they're no longer eligible for insurance. And at the rate that we're paying some of these individuals, they cannot afford any type of insurance at $10 an hour, four days a week. I think it's a great benefit to retain people. Once we get them, as you know, it's very hard to find people now. This person that I'm talking about actually works for five different departments, so we could look at hiring five different individuals and raising the wage cost, or we can take care of the people that we do find that can handle situations like that. In this case, this person works for the Planning Commission, works for Code Enforcement, works for the Water Department, works for the Supervision Department, and runs the Senior Coordination Center as a senior coordinator. So there's different ways of looking at this, on hiring multiple peoples or hiring one person that can do well, on having a flex schedule to take care of that individual, or keep things the same way as it is. I don't think we'll have a good time having employee retention if we're not allowed to provide benefits. For example, I know we have one person now we're grooming for a future position. If that person were to get married or have kids, not to insure them when they could go other places and easily make more money and get benefits will cause us, once again, to start from scratch, retrain, and on the age of some of us here, we're running out of time to train people, so he knows what I'm talking about. I'm looking at employee retention and keeping good people, so. Any questions? Do you have any answer? In this case, I believe we're talking about a 10-year-old and a 12-year-old.
Eight and 10.
Eight and 10, I'm sorry. This also would apply to many new hires after this that would want to put at a 80-20 share, at a 20% shared cost by employee of any family members on their insurance. Can I think of five other existing employees if they were to add?
Or six.
Six, okay.
What's that?
Six other employees if they were to add a spouse or a child or something maybe to add to insurance.
I think I sort of understand that. Six.
Do you have the list? Yes, but if they did, which has occurred here where people have not taken it and then taken it, so it is a situation that happens.
She has a spouse and children, and enough for it, so she doesn't qualify. I just want to say that I don't think that we spent over $107,000 in insurance for our current employees last year, and I don't, I believe that the Board in 2013 did this as a cost savings measure, and I agree with what they did, so I can't make a motion for that.
We did have a cost saving measure at that time, too. We redid our policy at that time and saved money, cut our insurance back then. Not only we cut, our increases since then, but as you see, one year was even a negative. Like I said, it pans out either two ways, either in wages or benefits, and if this employee goes, now there's five posts that need to be filled, five positions that you can hire some people in some capacity to try and fill. And lately, when you do run ads in the newspaper for health wanted and you're starting out people at $10 an hour, I can assure you, how many applicants? One, two, three maybe, and then when they find out it's four days a week, it's very difficult to find people. In the days of us hiring people at $8 an hour to run 50,000 and 60,000 dollar pieces of equipment, our tractors, our dump trucks, those days are over, and I don't know how to overcome that. And I don't think, I'm telling anybody anything they don't know. The economy is a little different for us right now. When people aren't satisfied with the job, they easily move to another one. I'm looking for, just to be fair, fair in wage and fair in taking care of the people that we have.
Well, I have no more questions. I'll make a motion to approve the healthcare policy for new hires.
Thank you. I'll support that motion. Deputy Clerk Rockup, please.
Scott? Clifford?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Arnold?
No.
Candell?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Letter H, Employee Compensation Request. Mr. President?
The last two employees were hired in. The last two current employees were hired in.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
The last two current employees were hired in at $12 an hour, and we have one that's been here since Jan, February, is only getting $10.28 an hour. I'd like to increase that to $12.
Basically, what we're asking for is an existing employee that was here before the other two new hires at $12 an hour, because once again, couldn't find really anybody at $10 an hour, her to be brought up to the same pay as the two new hires.
Correct. She was first hired in at part-time and then was promoted up to full-time in August.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee compensation request to increase the Building Department assistance wages to $12 an hour to be equal with the new hires.
Support.
I have a motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Clerk Candell. Any other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk Rockup, please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Letter I, Cellular Telephone Allowance Increase Request. I don't have my sheet on that one.
This was a request that was brought to us for the board members, board members currently receive on a monthly basis a $50 allowance for cell phone usage. And it was brought to my attention, a request to increase that. I don't have a recommended increase. I know it's important to decide if they wanted to report it to me.
Basically, whatever the cost plans of, do you have the new cost plans of the, for the top-ships phones with the internet data and everything? Whatever that is for the people that are on those or are using their phones in that capacity to cover the cost of it. Most of the people, their phones are not being covered and they're using it for business for the township. So, we just want to make sure that's covered, I believe. I guess we can, until you get that exact number, we should wait till we have that exact number.
I would vote, I would make the motion at the table at this time until we get more information, maybe look at it again in January, so we have some figures we can look at.
And I believe they check, too, when we're due for renewal. Is it coming up anytime soon? Do you remember?
I don't know.
We probably should go check on that also again.
I second that.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Letter J, Macomb Agricultural Purchase of Development Rights, PDR Application Cycle Proposal.
We received a letter November 12 from the committee chair of the Macomb Agricultural PDR Committee requesting that each of the six member townships pledge $500 to the committee so that they can use that money to obtain, to do their work as purchasing farmland. This $500 will not be paid until the closing of a purchase. So, it's basically, they want us to commit to $500. In the past, last year, I believe we paid $1,000. So, it's, their request is half of what it was last year.
Yeah, this is basically for agricultural preservation.
I will make the motion that we approve the, or that we pledge the amount of $500 to the Macomb Agricultural PDR Committee as requested in their letter dated November 12, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Honald. Any question or discussion? Once again, I believe this goes for closing costs, hazard insurance, recordings, filings, things of that nature, correct? Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Letter K, Set 2020 Community Development Black Grant Fund Public Hearing.
I'm requesting to set the public hearing for January 6, 2020. This will be for services in the amount of $1,856. $1,856 for services. Brick and mortar, they're doing a competition because a lot of communities couldn't use the brick and mortar for funding projects. So, there, if you have a project that is shovel-ready, you can do up to $250,000. We don't have any projects ready, so.
You know, can I get Mr. Caston up here just for one second, too? Just to like clarify this, just so nobody has visions of grand here anymore. This has been going on for the last couple of years where basically any project we put forward is denied. It's, I don't want to put this that, I think we have an unfair advantage against the southern communities of the larger populations that we're going to have to compete against. It's going to be very difficult for us to get any of these black grant funds. Is that correct in saying that?
The premise behind the program is to support low and moderate income individuals, low and moderate income neighborhoods. Where we do have low and moderate income people, they're spread out, so it makes it difficult to have a defined benefit area. It's very difficult then to apply for projects and compete. Now that they're enacting a competition, so to speak, I mean, the rules of the competition are favored so that the more dense populated areas, in fact, there are certain additional points awarded to the communities of Centerline, Mount Clemens, and Eastboy because of their high minority and/or income, low income level. So, it's going to be more and more difficult. Over the last few years, every time we've requested a project or thought we had one, it would be denied based on eligibility standards. So, it's, we were very fortunate that we were able to find a project for the demolition.
Correct.
I think it's going to be even more difficult in the future.
We were lucky and by your hard work, I appreciated that, that we were able to get some money for demolition for the new parking expansion. But I mean, that's, they will not tell you any recommendations. You have to keep throwing stuff up against the wall and see what sticks, basically. And my opinion, with very little help coming from them in this. So, I was pleased that we got that, but going forward to compete against these other communities where they automatically have points way above us, it's going to be very difficult in the future.
It definitely is.
That doesn't affect what we got for demolition?
No, that's already set. We already have that. But going forward, it's going to be very difficult. We used to get, for example, we used to get like $30,000 to use every year. It was split up. Well, I think politics got involved and they realized the bulk, some of the bulkers are to the south, and we're going to keep the majority of the money there, in my opinion. I think that's what's happened. So, I think we've been forgotten about a little bit up here at the North End. And it's upsetting, to say the least. So, I wanted to get that out right now so everybody had to know going forward what we're faced against. That money did come in handy to help us with good projects in the past, so.
So, do we need to set this today?
Yes, we do. And, sorry to carry on, but basically, we're only going to get roughly $1,000?
$1,856.
And that has to be given in one lump sum, correct?
No. They'll be different.
I thought there was a minimum. I think there's a minimum that you have to give. You can't split it up like you did before, so.
I'm sorry, I don't remember that.
Yeah, so it's like a minimum requirement. So, I think in our case.
Well, we have gotten a list of services that are going to be asking for this. So, as soon as I get that, I'll be able to answer that question better.
I think it's going to be made very easy for us that we could, our one qualifying factor, our senior center or seniors.
But if it's a minimum.
Boom, we're done.
We might not be able to do it. So, it all depends.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we set the public hearing for 2020 Community Development Black Grant Fund Public Hearing for January 2, 2020.
Oh, what date?
January 6, 2020.
I thought you said second. I'm sorry.
I may have. I was looking at two.
A second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Honald. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Letter L, 2020 Meeting Schedule.
We have, in the Board of Trustees, there are three meetings in the 2020 schedule that don't follow the normal intergouverning order. One will be August 3, the meeting will be at 4:00 as opposed to 6:30. That's because of election. The second one will be Tuesday, September 8, and that's because of Labor Day. And then the third one will be November 2, 2020, and that would be a 4:00 start because of the election.
What was on, sir? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The primary.
Oh, that's right.
And then there's one in the Planning Commission, and that's May 18, 2020. Oh, sorry, there's two. December 21, 2020.
Also, yes. Any questions? And outside of these dates also, too, I really appreciate the boards being proactive. If we do get a new developer, new development, too, we're not opposed to scheduling a special meeting to fast-track any new development in our community. So, if we have to set something outside the parameters of these meetings to benefit a developer in this township, we'll do it. So, it's worked very well so far. With the new development we've had come in, we've gotten great feedback from it.
I make a motion that we improve the 2020 One X Township Meetup Schedules as presented.
Excuse me, second.
I have a motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Letter 11, Public Comment. Any public comment this time? Public comment, number 12?
I make a motion that we enter at 7:12.
Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any last discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Be adjourned.